Baron, Council, thank you. Tonight is the December 14th Council briefing following the special meeting. There are four items that we'd like to try to get through tonight, but I am going to do them in a slightly different order. I'm basically going to do them in a reverse order because I think the council priorities are probably the most important and should go last so we can dedicate as much time to it as necessary. So with that, I'd like to introduce the co-sponsorship policy in number four slot, which is round two. A couple of months ago, you heard the draft policy that was created by the Recreation Parks Department and Jason Fatidis and his staff. He went back and made some revisions based on the comments that he had heard from council. What's been provided to you tonight in advance of the briefing is their revision to the co-sponsorship policy to address those concerns. And Jason is here to answer any questions that you might have or any final tweaks that you might want to make to it before ultimately it's brought back to council for formal consideration.
I guess I'll go ahead and use the light system since we're up here. Ms. Golding was first with a question.
Jason, on page three of five in section G2, the last sentence references to South Pasadena Municipal Code, Chapter 3.
Yes, I apologize for that. Really, in creating this policy, what we did, we looked at a lot of cities, firstly in the state of Florida and then again, and then, of course, across the nation, and that's just a very open. We'll correct that.
So is that referencing something in our code then? It'll reference, like, our sign code or something, perhaps? Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Dumas?
Thank you, Ed. I'm going to tell you about South Pasadena.
I did have a question on, in section 1B, it notes that the event must be without alcohol, which is something that was agreed on. But then on section 3, subsection G, subsection 4.4, you mentioned insurance for alcohol events.
Yes, another carryover that we should have struck, the reference to alcohol in that paragraph, and we will.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to thank you for your work on this and the adjustments based on our last meeting. And my question was about the criteria that they have to be a valid nonprofit or community service organization. Can you tell me what a community service organization would be, for example?
Yes, we were looking specifically, and I think council had brought it up, where we were looking at things like farmers markets, bike walks, evening music, acoustic music, bike events.
Okay, so it's a relatively loose criteria that allows you some flexibility with who you're going to allow to do something. So it might be somebody that puts together open mic nights but doesn't have a nonprofit associated with that.
Correct.
Okay, so then my follow-up question would be on page three of five, number G3, it says all nonprofits must complete. Could we just change that to all organizations? Because otherwise, then you knock out those community service organizations. Okay, thank you. That's all, otherwise, I thought this was very well done and I'm looking forward to seeing it implemented. And I'm kind of glad to see Pasadena in there because I do believe that we, there's always going to be a good example in other cities of things like this. So we shouldn't be reinventing them.
Yeah, and Pasadena would probably be the best example.
Ms. Golding? I apologize, I had one other question, and I didn't see it when I was asking you that first one. On page two of five, in the requirements and terms, section C, it mentions an exception for neighborhood associations not having to provide insurance coverage required by the city. Could you explain why?
Yes, the reasoning there is wrong is that, you know, if we're looking for community involved, we think that a neighborhood association would be a community coming together. We didn't want it to be cost prohibitive for them because the insurance could be expensive. And that was the sole reason.
Ms. Dumas?
Yeah, I'll follow up on Sandy's then. So could you give me an example of a community organization who'd be putting on a co-sponsor event at the city that differs from a community or a non非profit that would be allowed? Like Chris's example was just a person doing an open mic night, not being a nonprofit. How would that individual or individuals differ from a neighborhood organization or a community organization? And if it is an open mic night, is that something that we should have insurance for or shouldn't? So I just need a little bit more clarity on the community organizations, profit versus nonprofit, and then how the insurance in the neighborhood groups or organizations fall on.
So if you take the association in Riptide, for example, they want to come together and they want to do a farmer's market down at the Seawall Pavilion. That would be an example of a community organization that we would waive the insurance requirement. As far as an individual that would want to come and play a picnic, we'd go through the process, sort of the bidding process, we can go through the application to make sure that, you know, it's a free event, that it's not going to benefit that individual and it's free to the citizens and community.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Misa? Okay. I don't see any other lights. Anyone else? Last chance. Thank you, looking forward to working with us.
Thank you. We'll have Riken Parks make those final changes and we will schedule it to be brought back to council for formal consideration. The next item that we have on here are some proposed amendments to chapter 32 of the city's fats, oils, and grease ordinance, also referred to as FOG. This is something that the city attorney has been working on with the Public Works Department, and they've made some administrative changes to the ordinance itself. If either Mr. Baron or Mr. Emrosio would like to address some of those proposed changes. And again, council should have a draft of the mockups that has been proposed by staff.
Okay, thank you again for listening to your proposed changes. Chris and I, as well as George DeBreyer, are fats, oil, and grease guy in the back. For those that don't know him, very passionate man about everything that he does. And I have Phil Brown with us as well, the superintendent of PCP and then the water plants both. So we all four met and spent quite a good time on this ordinance. And a couple of easy ones we made, obviously, were our current ordinance pointed to places in the state code, specifically the state plumbing code, which doesn't really exist. It's actually the state building code plumbing section. So we had a lot of places where our ordinance was pointing to places that didn't exist. So we had to clean up all that administrative stuff, which Chris took care of for the most part. And then what we did is we actually took a good look at our ordinance itself. Where the city and our FOG ordinance concentrated heavily on gravity grease interceptors as a requirement and only allowing the alternate to be used if there wasn't space. The alternate can actually do a somewhat better job than what a gravity grease interceptor can do. So we kind of began to see that this is where the future is going to, and there's a lot of places that already have them. And there's been a lot of pressure on us as we get new businesses coming in. They go to a salesman, the salesman recommends one or the other. That's what they want to put in, and it gets to our end to try to defend what we've got. So what we've actually done is loosened up some of the requirements that were in there for space requirements, and we do allow the alternate grease interceptors to be used as well. And so for the most part, that was the changes that were made. A lot of different definitions and words, and we cleaned up a lot of the ordinance itself just to make it read better and more legal, I guess, is the term. So if anybody has any specific questions.
Ms. Golding?
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you for the explanation because I was wondering when I saw the change regarding the hydro mechanical, I was, yeah, wondering why it was changed from shallow prohibited to made prohibited. So that helps me a lot, I appreciate that. So it's not a matter of we prefer the gravity. It's just that we want to give them the option to be able to install a hydro mechanical if they so choose, correct?
There was some questions brought to us as to whether we could legally point them in one direction or another. You know, so when we looked at it administratively to say, can we really tell people they have to put in the gravity over a hydro mechanical? It kind of became questionable of whether we had the legal authority to be able to require one or the other when they're competing device. So we thought it was better to make those changes to the code to allow the use of either one.
And do we prefer one over the other?
George is going to stick me up. George has preached gravity grease interceptors. It's what he's learned, it's what he knows, it's what he can demonstrate to show, it's what he's very comfortable with. And he has also seen a lot and heard a lot about the alternate interceptors. So he's kind of coming around, I guess, George. So anyway, he understands, I mean, a lot of times we would allow them as space requirements would come in. So what we're getting into now is you're getting a drive-through that might be added into a strip mall. And now you're requiring to bust up a big chunk of the parking lot to put in this gravity grease interceptor underground, where it's got to fit, how it's got to do. That all has to do with the inspection and the contact times that actually have for the grease and the gray water to flow through it. And what George has found is that he can actually put considerable amounts of stipulations in place on how the hydro mechanical will work to allow the same regardless result. The issues are is the salesman promised that you can install a hydro mechanical and you don't ever have to do anything for 90 days or six months or whatever. And then, you know, so we make sure from the beginning that the business owners understand our rules say different than that. And they say you have to do it every, you know, 30 days. And then we can offer you waivers to let you go longer if you can prove that you're not putting any grease in. So it's a little bit of a salesman technique that they say, look how much cheaper this is because you don't have to do anything for six months. But our ordinance lets us be the ones to determine what that length of time is.
So ultimately, is the hydro mechanical cheaper to the business than the gravity?
It's about the same. From what I understand, cost-wise, it's apples and apples. The difference is, like they try to say, if they sell them on the amount of maintenance you have on the bid unit. So we clarified ours to say, hey, if we inspect it and it does pass and we don't seem to have any issues with it, then we can extend that timeout. So they can actually get on with it and even play.
Okay, and one last question. The financial impact on the memo is talking about financial impact to the city. Do we anticipate that any of these changes that we would be making would have any financial impact on the businesses?
Only if they're already either have to get one. We have some businesses out there that do not have a grease interceptor. And as we get through our COVID restrictions and our moving from restaurants to bars and back and forth, we've got to address those. We have a few bars that are now restaurants that are operating without a grease interceptor. We've got to kind of deal with those in the upcoming months as we see the changes in COVID and business rules. Overall, there's not a cost difference unless they have one failing. And then we have, you know, a rebate program based on upgrades and whatnot. So it all kind of helps them along with that process as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Jason?
Just a quick question. I won't hold you to any specific number either. Is it more popular in Jackson Beach to have the gravity over the hydro? Are we seeing an equal amount of them or is the other one?
I think it's closer to being more gravity than it is hydro mechanical. George can probably speak better as a percentage wise.
Yes, that's because we were pushing the gravity more so. But as time went on, the hydro mechanicals are being more popular, not even on Jackson Beach, but in the entire state.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other questions here on the council. I think anything, this is a huge expense to our restaurants, and I think anything we can do to streamline and make things easier to comprehend from our end is a good thing for our small local businesses. Any other questions here on the council? Thank you, Mr. Baron and the FOG team.
So that's another item that we will make final changes to and bring back to council for your formal consideration as well. The third item that we have in here is a communications document for the benefit of the new council members. I went through this same listing with the previous or existing council members a couple of months after first starting. And the reason was to clarify lines of communication and availability for the city manager and administration, just so that we're all on the same playing field, so to speak. If you notice, the first half of the document is information that's all been made part of the legislative policies manual that's actually contained within that document. But starting with number two is the sort of supplemental information that is not contained within there. And that's what I wanted to walk through with you tonight. Specifically, it talks about council and department director communication. Many of you have probably observed that within the city charter, it talks about communication being through the city manager. And this is to basically clarify for all the council members that there are levels of communication with department directors that I am okay with elected officials having. And there's specific instances that are called out. For instance, if there is an existing document or memorandum or an agenda memo that has been produced by the organization and you wish to ask questions about the content by the author or by the department director, I would encourage you to actually reach out to the director because they are the subject matter expert. The same thing goes if you are going to request tours of facilities, ride-alongs, or et cetera, or try to get to know their operation. By all means, please call the department director and schedule some time to either meet with them or to get tours of the appropriate facilities. I think for some of the new council members, you've already started that process of working through Chris Wright and actually have started tours of the facilities. So again, for any of the council members, if you want to get tours of the facilities or spend some time with the director, feel free to either call the director directly or call Chris Wright and we will coordinate that and make that happen. The next item is with regards to, or just to clarify, going down a little bit further. Questions or requests from council should not be directed below the level of department director. That's one that I would really appreciate that you stick to. The department directors and I all have a good working relationship whereby if you send them an email and forget to copy the city manager or city administration, they will immediately let me know that they've been contacted. But if you go below the level of department director, there's no guarantees that administration gets notified that you have gone below them. So for the purposes of transparency and accountability, I'd like that level of communication to stay with the department director and administration within that realm. Item number three is with regards to anonymous information. It's not uncommon that we receive anonymous information or anonymous requests in a city manager's office. This is to let you know how we handle that. With regards to a request for information, we treat it just like a public records request. And I know for the new council members, that might be a little new for you as you just had your onboarding through staff. But anytime someone anonymously requests information from us, we are obligated to provide it and we are not allowed legally to ask them for their name or the purposes with which they will use that information. So anonymous requests for information, we treat that as a public records request. If we receive other anonymous information, it's the policy of the city manager and administration's office that we do not engage and respond with the anonymous individual. However, that also does not mean that we will not investigate the allegations or the complaints that may be made. So we take every piece of information that we receive seriously to accept, but it doesn't mean that we engage with people who remain anonymous. On the next page, number four, on page three of three, is with regards to the city manager's office specifically. The city manager is available 24/7 unless on leave, and that includes vacation sick, FMLA, or bereavement. There's a reason we have a deputy city manager, and she is highly capable of running all of the operations here at the city of Jacksonville Beach. If I am not available, she is the one that is authorized to make all of those decisions, or up to a certain limit as she and I may have discussed before my absence from the office. Telephone and city email communications. Phone calls after normal business hours are acceptable provided the privilege is not abused. Please don't call me at 1:00 in the morning to ask me who won the baseball game because I'll probably say, you serious? And I'll hang up the phone. And if, in the event I don't answer the phone, leave a message. Let me know whether or not you want me to call you back, and I will call you back at my next available opportunity. It's not uncommon that you may call me during working hours and I'm in a meeting or potentially back-to-back-to-back meetings, in which case it may be several hours before I'm able to reach back out to you. And whenever we do mass communication with the council, we will do that by email. It will not be uncommon for you to receive a text message on your phone or perhaps a text message through Ring Central that advises you to check your city email. And there's a message from either the city manager or department director or something along those lines. So that is a form of communication that we will use going forward. Again, with regards to texting, we do not conduct any of the city's businesses by text. And again, we may only use it to pass out mass information or tell you to go check your email. Or I might also send you a text and ask you if you're available for a phone call just to see if you're free and not in a meeting. The last one is with regards to the city manager being out of office and on duty, off duty. As I've indicated, if I'm in the office or if I'm out of the office but still on duty, such as at a conference, offsite meetings, et cetera, that means I am still reachable. By all means, call me, email me, whatever you need to do to get in touch with me. If I'm out of the office but still on the clock, I may be delegating some of the decision-making authority to the deputy city manager in my absence, especially for a lot of the day-to-day activities. And the last one is if I am out of the office and I'm off duty, such as vacation sick, FMLA, or bereavement, don't contact me because I'm not going to return the call. I might be on a cruise with the phone and a safe. So in that instance, and I think you all received an email that I sent out at the end of last week. Both deputy city manager Nelson and I have scheduled vacations coming up, and we stagger them so that one of us is available at all times. The week that she is out and I am here, call me or contact me for any questions. And the week that I am out and she is here, all of your calls and questions will go to her. So this is basically a walkthrough of what we did two years ago. And I just wanted to do that early into the seating of this new council. Do you have any questions?
I see, one mic for Ms. Dumas.
Thank you. I apologize, I'm always enrahning you with concerns. Apparently, I'm supposed to be going through Chris, correct?
For the purposes of record-keeping, you can send them to both of us as long as we're both on the email list. Chris is the record keeper, so to speak. So if you send it to me, anytime I send a response, you'll typically notice I have Chris Wright in the CC. And that's specifically so she's keeping a running tab of what's outstanding and what's the answer and what happened.
So when would we contact you directly? Because this says that all in section one, in section one, oh, I think it might be the last one. 1B. It says that any request of individual council member for response or to a complaint, which we receive a lot of, or concerns from the public or any other groups, that shall be made through the assistance of the city manager. So when do we contact you directly?
If you just have generic questions.
Okay. What's your favorite Christmas movie?
It was my favorite Christmas movie. Hey, did I see the installation of a new sign? Things like that. But again, if you take a look at the way that first sentence is written, it's also very specific. It's for response to a complaint because we want to make sure that it's distributed to the right department for address. A lot of times, if any of you contact me with an issue that's been presented to you by a member of the public, a business owner, or you've seen it for yourself, Chris Wright is normally ahead of me in seeing the email, and she will forward it to the appropriate department director to start researching the issue at hand. The second item is, or any request for information or data requiring staff research or the creation of a new data or document. So if you had a request along the lines of, can I get a report from the police department that shows the following? They may or may not have that document in existence. And if we're going to go down that path, there may be several to multiple hours of staff time that are necessary to put that document together. There needs to be a more formal tracking of those types of requests so that we can make a determination of whether or not it needs to be brought up to the council. Is it information that would be beneficial to all of you based on the amount of time that is going to be spent by staff trying to fulfill that request? And I think those were really the two big ones that were there.
Yep, that's it. I'll stop emailing.
Ms. Golding?
Yeah, I guess I'll stop emailing Mike, too. Quick question. So now that we have Ring Central, is 4C maybe, does that loosen up a little bit? Do we have a little more flexibility to text you through Ring Central because that will be part of public record?
You can send me a text through Ring Central. I think this is more applicable towards your standard personal telephone or your cell phone. So, you know, don't send a generic text. But if you are using city systems, whether that's Ring Central, whether that's Outlook, feel free to use the email feature or the texting feature because I've had a council member that has actually sent me a couple of photographs through the Ring Central app. And those photographs are now recorded and logged and part of the record. So it's not being done out of the sunshine, it's in the sunshine.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have no other lights.
Fantastic. With that, we will backtrack to item number one, which is city council priorities. And we'll probably spend a few minutes actually walking through these just so that everyone has a little bit more appreciation of what they are, the amount of effort that goes into each one of these, and how they came to being. When I started almost two years ago, one of the first things that we did with council was to sit down and say, what are the council's priorities for the next two years and beyond going forward? And obviously, a lot of different council members had a lot of different ideas as to where we should be going. But there was a very good briefing conversation and I think consensus on a lot of items of what we should be moving forward on. What you see attached to the memo is an actual Gantt chart that shows you what those priorities were or what they were consolidated down to. And I'd like to walk you through those and talk to you a little bit about them. The purpose of this particular item tonight is you, as a council, will be seated for effectively the next 23 months. And the question is, are the priorities of this council the same priorities of the previous council? Or are there any changes that you would like to make in terms of the projects that you're working on? Is there any prioritization that you would like to see or any changes in course direction? We, as staff, need to know that because if we continue in this direction, and ultimately, it's not the direction you want us to go, we're going in the wrong direction. So that's why we're having this conversation so early into your seating as new council so that we can make the most out of the time that we have allotted to us between now and November of 2022. So the first thing that was brought up was community vision. And I'll actually tie that in with strategic plan. One of the things that was brought up with all council members, I think the question may have been asked of me or I volunteered it, that while there was a lot of focus on the city's downtown and specifically the downtown CRA, the District, there seemed to be a lack of focus on other areas of the city. And it was also noted that there was no strategic plan for the entire community of things that we were trying to achieve on a very high level and over a long period of time in order to make progress as a community. So the city council agreed that both community vision and the creation of a strategic plan for the organization were two high priority items. The community vision process started with community conversations, which took place over the last 12 months. There were a total of nine. Some of you that are out there on council actually participated in one or more of them, or you were an observer in any of those meetings. And the purpose was to kind of go through that first step of community visioning, of finding out what the residents thought about their future community. The finalization of that is actually coming up with a vision statement, which, to give you a little bit of background, we're currently awaiting a scope and fee structure from Florida Institute of Government to serve as a facilitator on Saturday with council to hopefully hammer out both a vision statement and a vision statement with you for the community. But the next phase after that will be the creation of a strategic plan. And the strategic planning process is not something that occurs on one day with a facilitator. If we're lucky, we'd probably get through the priorities of a strategic plan in that type of session and maybe start creating some subcategories. But ultimately, that is going to be a multi-month process to create a strategic plan that lays out the priorities, the goals, and individual objectives that the organization is going to achieve over a very long period of time to meet the needs of its residents and businesses. The next two elements that you see on that Gantt chart are also tied together, POP Plan Amendments and EAR. The EAR stands for Evaluation and Appraisal Report and the WEN Development Code Amendments. We'll start with the WEN Development Code. You'll see that there's a Phase 1, and then further out, there's a Phase 2. You'll see that there's a phase one, and then further out, there's a phase two. The previous council felt that there were issues with the land development code that needed to be changed, some of them immediate, and some of them after doing the comp plan amendments or the evaluation and appraisal report. The first phase amendments were done. It was actually a package that had been brought by planning and development about 18 months earlier, a year, 18 months earlier, that had ultimately been rejected by council, but that was effectively, the baby had been thrown out with the bathwater. There were a few items that were controversial, but an entire package of LDC amendments had been dismissed. So that package was brought back in front of council. The handful of items were worked through with council, there was even one item that was removed from consideration, and ultimately, that first level of LDC changes was approved by council. Phase two was intended to be a more broad look at the LDC, and one of the things that we would need to do with council was determine whether it's a complete overhaul of the entire LDC, or whether there are a handful of areas, focused areas, that council really wants to concentrate on, and are we bringing in an outside consultant to help us focus on very specific areas? And that's something that we'll need to have a subsequent conversation with council on as to whether this is a wholesale change or very surgical strategic changes to the LDC. The comp plan amendments in the year, we have not done a comp plan amendment in, I want to say, 12-plus years. I can't remember the exact year that we did our last comp plan amendments. But the long and short of it is, we haven't gone through that process in talking with both our planning and development director and our senior planner. They both feel that there's not too much that needs to change in either document, but again, we haven't established a community vision yet. So there's a little bit of a catch-22 there with regards to the sequencing process. I can tell you that doing comp plan amendments and an evaluation and appraisal report, again, are projects that will take months to do. It's not something that's done in just a couple of weeks. Takes a series of time. There can even be community involvement through workshops, where you're getting information specifically in the evaluation and appraisal report, where you're asking the community for their input. The next item that you see is charter review. Again, the charter had not been updated in a number of years, and there were very specific items that council wanted addressed as part of a phase one, and incorporated into the election that was just held in November. So if you saw those ballot initiatives that were on there for the charter, that was the result of phase one. Phase two would effectively be an overhaul of the entire charter document. City attorney Rosie O'Neil and I have had a couple of conversations with our attorney that did phase one, and is prospective we're going to do phase two, where we talked about different methodologies of achieving a full charter overhaul. But there are effectively segments within that document that I think date back to the 1950s that have never been either updated, removed, or determined for relevance, if it should still be in the charter at this point in time. The next several items are all items that have been checked off the list, so to speak. The first one was a legislative policies manual. That was a proposal to council to have kind of a reference document for council members to go to, where they can find information about what their job actually is. We have since completed that document. I think the clerk's office is making a couple of final tweaks, but the original draft is up on the website, and when those tweaks are made, we will substitute that out with the final document. Council code of ethics was another priority for council. They wanted an overarching document that guided the behavior of council members, not just on the dais and in this room, but out in the community, engaging with the public, engaging with other elected officials, the press, et cetera. And that document has also been completed. The traffic policy is one that council also requested, which was put together by the police department, and has also been in effect now for, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of eight months or so. Basically, anytime there is a traffic complaint, whether it's speeding, we need a stop sign, how about speed bumps, that gets sent to the police department, and they follow the procedures that are in their traffic policy. And the last one is a citizens academy, which is expanding the current police academy, which is a multi-session, a multi-day session with the police department for people to get acclimated with what the department does. A citizens academy would do the same thing but for the organization itself, where people would get exposed to parks and recreation, public works, police, all the other departments, and they would again have a graduation similar to what they have in the police department. That's been effectively postponed, mostly because of COVID. Needless to say, when you have difficulty getting 30 people in a room together to be in close quarters at our different facilities for the purposes of educating them or tours of the facilities, it just doesn't work right now. So we basically put that on the back burner until we feel comfortable that we can open it up to the public and invite them in to participate. The items that are on the bottom are basically some of the things we are working on internally, separate from the council priorities. The ERP, which we plan on coming back to you in January to talk more about what the next steps are. That is the overhaul of our financial computer systems here within the city. It affects our finance department, human resources department, and utility building division. The next one is the purchasing policy. Previous council members have all heard from both the finance department and the city attorney that the purchasing policy we currently have in place is antiquated and doesn't meet our purposes. The city attorney, I think, has estimated it's probably a six-to-12-month process to do a full overhaul of that document by specifically looking at what other organizations have put into effect, and then ultimately trying to pull out what we feel are the best segments that are applicable to us as an organization. And then administrative policies and procedures. The deputy city manager has been picking those off one at a time when she's got some spare time in between her FOP negotiations and FMPA meetings and some other stuff. So that's kind of a high-level overview of what the priorities have been for the past 20 or so months. And the question that we have for council, and the reason I save this for the end is in case you want to have a conversation amongst yourselves as well, is whether or not these should still be the priorities going forward, or whether there are change in priorities that this council thinks are necessary. And with that, I will turn the floor over to the council for either questions or for your discussion of where we'll go.
I'm waiting for lights to turn on. No lights? No? Up. Mesa, you're first.
Yes. I'm assuming we're going to be working on the community vision plan in the next couple of months. My only thoughts is I would like for us all to be on the same page. I'm pretty excited about this and have some thoughts and ideas on this is to have certain people, certain council members, take points on some of the projects, and just to have an expedient vision plan and just move forward. Set goals, departmental goals. For example, the fogs, I know, you know, decreased fogs from residential areas, and I was looking at other vision plans from other communities that Chet Stokes sent out, and I think it would be great to adopt and adapt some of those. Those are just my thoughts on moving forward with the community vision plan.
So just to clarify terminology, when we say community vision plan, is that interchangeable with strategic plan?
No. The community vision is effectively the vision statement. A strategic plan is basically a standalone document. It may make reference to the vision statement and the mission statement of the organization and our community, but the community vision is a to-be. What is it we want to be as a city?
So, but the question was the community vision plan. So there's a community vision statement, and there's a strategic plan, but there isn't a community vision plan?
That's correct.
Okay.
At least not our idea.
Right. I just wanted to make, just get everybody on the same page. So just because we have so many vision plans related to our downtown area, so there's the vision statement, and then there is the strategic plan. So I would just, if it's okay to replace your terminology of vision plan with strategic plan. Does that all make sense, everybody? Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else? Mr. Jansen?
When it comes to the strategic plan, I see we're pushing off the land development code to the fourth quarter of '21. I don't know if we have to bring that a little bit closer if we're going to talk about what our strategic vision plan is when it comes to at least the downtown section of Jacksonville Beach. Seeing on the board adjustments, I know that there's a lot of issues with our land development code that are kind of unaddressed at this time, and we've had to work through them from that aspect. And so I got a little snapshot of what we were doing, and I don't want to kick that can down the road to the end of '21. Maybe we should bring that a little bit closer up, that we're going to start addressing our vision for downtown.
Ms. Demont?
Thank you. Just to be clear, the vision is citywide, it's not just downtown. And I agree that there is a lot of stuff in the land development code that needs to be updated, even though I know that plenty of times it says, yeah, maybe not so bad. But on the planning commission, we ran into a lot of issues. So I know that that needs to be refreshed. However, we don't know what the best way to refresh it is until we have a vision for the city and what the city is trying to achieve. And then once we can get the identity of what the city wants to be in 15, 20, 30 years, then we can ensure that our strategic plan, we have all our goals and goals and priorities set to achieve that, and then the land development code aligns with that further. So this way, we can make sure that anything that we're developing over time helps to meet the strategic plan and the goals set in the strategic plan, which eventually will help us meet our mission and achieve our vision. And so it's alignment. So yes, I can see why one would think that we should try and get the land development code done sooner, but if we want to actually create that alignment and not just start having a little, continuing with a patchwork on land development code that we've been dealing with over the years, I don't think it's, it would behoove the city to do it and you'd have to do it again after the strategic plan. Just my thoughts. Other than that, these are still my priorities.
Mr. Sump?
Well, I'm going to echo that real quick, because that was almost exactly what I was going to say is, if you look, I think it was, I forget which document, it's '07, Vision Statement Plan, whatever that document is called, I apologize for not remembering the name at the moment, but it said in there that we need to have a land development code that lets what we put out in this document happen. And it's at odds all the time. So I think it's vitally important to, you know, get our mission statement, our vision statement, then get our strategic plan, and then overhaul the land development code to allow the strategic plan to happen. Otherwise, we're going to be right back where we were at '07, where we have two documents that are butting heads. Next, and the other one I want to kind of point out is that three of these are fully completed with the legislative policies manual, the council code of ethics, and the traffic policy. So I think that us guys that are new probably have some ideas, and the other people that have been here for two years plus have some things, other ideas that they want to address. So I think we should set aside a time to get together and come up with a few more. We've got three open priorities, and we have nine priorities here, so I think we can maybe have around that same number of priorities for the next two years so that we can, I know one, you know, some of these are going to be very long processes, but there's other things that we can do in a short amount of time to help improve the city and just kind of brainstorm some projects together that we want to see happen in our next few years.
I wouldn't look at it as nine slots to keep full, just on behalf of the staff. But I agree, we did knock off some of the more low-hanging fruit. The ones that are still left to be done are pretty ambitious and have been. It's deferred maintenance. We've seen it across our city, and we see it internally, too. So these are all really important and are going to be pretty big tasks. I didn't see who got, are you still, did you already ask your question? Are you still? Okay, Ms. Golding?
I just want to say that I agree that these still are important priorities for us. I agree with what Ms. Hoffman said and also what Ms. Demont said, that the ones that we have ahead of us are pretty significant and very, very, very important. And the ones that we have done have been really great as well, but definitely low-hanging fruit. And I feel like, yeah, I mean, we can certainly talk about other ideas that maybe we want to try to, you know, look at doing, but I'm not set on us having to fill any of those slots that we've already, you know, we've already completed, because there is some bandwidth issues, I know, that we're with our staff in trying to get all these things done, too. So we do need to take that into account. I know that there's a lot on the city attorney's plate, and so I still feel good about these. And to Ms. Demont's point, I'm a huge supporter of doing things in the right order, because that way we will get the best result. You know, I can tell you that the EAR was done in 2008, and I think it was adopted in 2009, so that was a long time ago. I was here when that was done, though, and we definitely, we're well overdue getting that done. So I think we definitely need to make sure that we continue to move forward in that direction.
Mr. Jansen?
Yeah, so the only other point I was going to make is, as far as the LDC was concerned, and being at the end of the fourth quarter of '21, is pushing it back, kind of lets us work in sync with it. I feel like if we wait on it, then that's just that much time that goes by before we can, you know, start implementing ideas into our strategic plan. And that was my whole point of not holding off on addressing those issues.
Can we speak to how the potential vacancy in the planning director position is going to impact these items, in particular the land development code and comp plan? Even just potential vacancy, but potentially having a brand-new person on staff?
Yeah. Well, the good news is that we still have a senior planner who's been here for five-plus years and understands the current code as it exists today. That's a plus. A new director may bring different perspectives from outside with regards to different forms of land development codes. There's form-based codes, some other versions that are out there as well, but they may have a different perspective. I think the biggest issue is going to be that anything that was going to be legwork done by our in-house staff will obviously be hamstrung by the vacancy created by the planning and development director. If the LDC updates, as well as the comp plan in the year, is something that we were going to contract out anyways, then it would hopefully not be as detrimental, but now we're still asking one person to oversee that contract as we move forward. So my gut's telling me that based on conversations with some of the elected officials, that the LDC may be more of a full overhaul than a surgical strike on certain areas. And if we're going to do a full overhaul, then that means we're going to bring in an outside consultant, and we're going to workshop it, and we're going to go through the whole code from A to Z. So the question then becomes, when do we start that process in comparison to the comp plan amendments and evaluation appraisal report? And how does that fit in with strategic plan and community vision?
Do you want to get a head nod consensus of whether we think it should be a full overhaul or surgical changes?
I'd be happy to hear what you have to say.
I don't think we have enough information to say that. We don't have a vision yet. Without a vision, we can't say if we know that it's going to be a full overhaul or if it's just going to be tweaked.
So based on the fact that we don't have the information and none of us are planners, would you anticipate, we're not signing a contract, would you anticipate that you'd be more comfortable with a full overhaul or surgical selective changes? So full overhaul? Selective changes? Extentions? Okay. Let's see, straw poll opinion there. And then the other thing, if we do bring in outside consultants for the land development code, if we are, if we, if the strategic plan guides us to do a full overhaul, do we have that budgeted?
I'm going to look back at Ashley, and the answer is it's not in this year's budget. But if we needed to find money to make it happen in this fiscal year, we would bring something back to you from a budget amendment perspective.
Okay, so I feel, I don't see any other lights on. I feel I feel like the consensus, you know, generalizing from the overall group is that we like the priorities that are listed in the order that they're listed, but that we would support moving with equiteness towards completing the items. Does that, does anybody disagree with my summary there?
I don't disagree. I think it's more nuanced than that, because I do, with all deliberate speed, you want to do it, but there's only so fast you can move with all of these on councils, on a limited staff, with a new planning director, with a council that tends to, in the past, not have met that much. And we have sunshine and all that, because there are a lot of barriers. We also have to overlay that on top of the electoral map. Some of these things would require votes of the citizens, and so we have to line this stuff up so we are making sure that our job is done prior to June of an election year so we can get onto that coming year's ballot. So there are, there are constraints. So yes, with all deliberate speed, but we can't move fast on things that just can't be done fast.
I would not suggest that we move fast on things that can't be done fast. So I hope you didn't take my summary as such, but we want to proceed with it quickness. I think that this council, just by the conversation here and conversation on the campaign trail and things like that, seems ready to roll up their sleeves and get to work. So I think we need to be prepared for a lot of extra meetings and extra reading, homework, et cetera, to be able to move through, through these things in an informed and deliberate way. Mr. Nichols?
And I'm not opposed to any of the new council members, if they do have other ideas, if they want to add to this and want to propose it. I mean, it's a timeline. I mean, we can push it out to the end, but I think if y'all, y'all have ideas that you've, that you've developed before getting on and something that has been a goal of yours, I'm definitely open to hearing it and possibly adding it to us.
And to what Georgette said, any referendum, we're going to have to have at least a six month berth before it can be, before they'll be able to write it up and put it on supervisor elections, accepting it, language.
It was, I believe it was end of May, right around June, June 1 was our cutoff. It's, it's about six months prior to the elections where you have to have proposed language in to the supervisor of elections office.
Correct. If we don't do it in an August election, or an off cycle, which we could do that as well. So, I mean, just bear in mind that would be that six month time period. That's why I don't like the, I want to get on the LDC earlier than later.
Is there any reason we can't move the LDC up like a little bit to start, you know, reviewing it and really make a decision if it's, if it's bad and running it concurrently with some of the other stuff?
Can I just interject here? The LDC doesn't require a vote of the people. It's the charter amendments that are going to require citizen vote. So it's, if we work our way back from the charter amendments, and we don't know how we want to address the charter until we do all those other things that need to be done before that. I just want to make sure that we're looking at, if not all of these things require citizen vote, so that we know which things require votes of us, which things have to go in front of the planning commission first and then to us, that's all your LDC stuff.
Yeah, I'm familiar with referendums and which ones require, which ones don't. I guess what I was trying to say is that I don't know that we necessarily have to do one thing, and now we can do the next, and now we can do the next as much as we can work in sync. And if we back that, like Councilman Nichols was saying, back that LDC up a little bit, we can start working in sync along with other ideas. And that way, if we have to address referendum somewhere, somewhere down the road, we can.
Mayor, I would suggest that we, the two largest projects here, I would say, are going to be the, the Charter Phase Two and the LDC. And if, well, Mike and I have had discussions previously about possibly moving the Charter work up in time, closer, because that, that's, that's going to take a lot of, a lot of work. And that's most closely tied to other dates that we can't control, so to speak, if we want something done within a two-year period. So the, as, as your city attorney, I would suggest that we consider getting to work on the Charter Phase Two a little bit, possibly a little sooner than we may have originally thought. And the amount of hours that it's going to take on a comprehensive change for the LDC is going to be the largest project in my office. There's no question about that. So the sooner that I'm able to start on that, the better, because those, the depth of that project are, you know, dozens of weeks of full day projects spread out over a year, year and a half. So if there's anything that you're contemplating moving sooner in time that the council would want staff directed to, you know, perform, I would suggest those are the two, that we move closer up in our calendar, in our plan chart. The others, we can chip away at better, but the Charter Review Phase Two and LDC take a full-on commitment. We can't just start that and come back to it months later. Once we engage that, we're full throttle, we have to stay focused on that and get that done. That's, that's a full commitment. Right. Yes, we have that schedule, okay. So Mike reminded me that we have, in February of next year, we have the Phase Two Charter Briefing Topic Schedule. So that, boy, we'll, I mean, we'll get there before we know, we'll be in February so fast. So, okay, so maybe February will be the time that we really get started on that. And my outside consultant, Cliff Shepherd, who worked with us on Phase One, he's ready, and I, you know, he's on standby, he's, I told him, you know, try to get ready to do Phase Two a little bit sooner than we originally spoke about. So following our briefing in a couple of months, I can, the very next morning, get to work with Cliff.
Ms. Golding?
And I, I believe though, that the LDC still, we're still dependent on the comp plan work that we need to do, right? So, yeah. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, and it's a big concern for me, and I'm sure it is for you, is anything we do with the LDC has legal ramifications, and so we really, and potential unintended consequences too. So that's an area that's really going to need some very, very.
This, yeah, there's so much work involved in the land development code. I mean, there's, it, it just can't be overstated. And I don't mean just for me, I mean for staff. I mean, I need, you know, Heather Ireland is going to be critical through the entire step, through the entire process, and every step. And the, and that's, you know, I would have to include her in every division, every article, every chapter that we're working on, she needs to know. The new director needs to be involved in every decision. There's dozens and dozens of meetings, there's tons of research, rewrites, double check the law, cross the Ts, dot the Is. It's, it's a big project, so. But yes, I agree that Councilmember Demont makes a great point that there is a sequence that must occur, a logical sequence that must occur, or else we're just, you know, coming down the wrong path. So the question is, do we, how soon do we begin those, those sequences to really get this right? We want our Chapter 34 to be right. And, you know, that's not done quickly. That's, that's it, that's all there is to it. But the Charter, I'm actually excited to work on the Charter, because the Charter drives me nuts. I read it, and I'm just thinking, boy, Mike, just let me get started on this thing. But, you know, we have a thousand projects, and Mike's timed it out perfectly, and we're coming up in that couple of months, and Cliff's ready to go. Come February, if council gives us the direction, the next morning, we're ready, we're going to start on that. So that, that work and project, we can start, you know, that, that's heavy drafting, lots of legalese, redrafting of a city charter, that's, that's how that starts to develop.
Mr. Demont?
Thank you. See, that's what I was going to say, is we need the comp plan to do the LDC. Now, we can shorten time on the comp plan, but if we look at this timeline, we're already three months behind. We're six months behind on the vis, we're, we'll be six months behind on the vision, we're three months behind on the strategic plan. So even though it's sequential, we are behind. And it's not, it's not staff, it's, it was COVID and the craziness that we've been dealing with. So realistically, I'm not sure if we're going to get this done in two years.
I mean, just in the next two years, I don't see this amount, but it really depends on what the vision ends up being in the strategic plan and how much change is going to be needed in the LDC. That's the critical piece there, what's the amount of change needed, which we're then contracting out. But we don't know that until we do the other stuff, so, yeah.
So hypothetically, if we go through strategic planning and it tells us that, and again, this is hypothetical, your downtown's a mess, you guys, really, we need to look at downtown specifically, would it make sense to pull just the land development code impacting our central business district and look at that first? Does that make any sense at all, or is it better just to look at it from the whole document?
As, and, as one whole project, because if we try to break it up too much, what happens is we'll end up passing certain ordinances that take segments of Chapter 34, LDC. Then, three, four months later, I'm working on something and I realize that is going to affect everything that I did in council approved four months earlier, now I need to go back and change what council approved four months earlier. It's inevitable. If we do it that way, kind of a checkerboard fashion, that's going to end up happening to us. So it's one big project overhaul, looking at the whole picture, and that is the best way to ensure that we won't be creating extra work in longer periods of time for ourselves. So that's, that's my recommendation.
So if we have an outside consultant, is that what I'm hearing, is the recommendation to take a look at the LDC, have an outside consultant come in and take a look at it first?
Well, I think that's where the, the two different schools of thought are kind of hitting the waterheads. We could have someone come in and look at the LDC now and say, you know, there's all sorts of things that could change, but if you don't know what you're tying it back to from your vision and your strategic plan, you don't know what to change it to.
Sure.
So any changes that we would be making to the LDC at this point in time would, for the most part, be based on council's input and possibly comments that you receive from the public when we would listen, when we would hear those ordinances. But it would not be done necessarily comprehensively as part of an overarching role of what we're trying to achieve over a 20 or 30-year window.
Sure. I was just thinking, if we're, if we're addressing the idea of using consultants, there's no reason why they couldn't get started earlier, post, post our vision plan, or post the strategic vision plan, I should say.
Yeah, and again, you have the question of, of comp plan, are you making your comp plan amendments in between prior to starting the LDC changes? Because your comp plan is basically an overarching document that helps guide your LDC and lays out all of your policies and roles.
We could also have the expert, if we hired an expert consultant who specializes in LDCs for municipalities, they could provide us, to add on to what Mike's points were, they could also add or offer us generalized recommendations that they would have probably been making to any, you know, Florida municipality that has an LDC that's a little outdated. So they could give us some insight as to general topics, general concepts that they would, you know, upon reading our LDC, they would suggest, well, I can see, here's nine, 10 items that I would tell you right now that I can start to work on in a general form. I would make that recommendation to any city your size, coastal city, some sort of generalize, you know, generalize some of the information for us to get that ball rolling. Also, what Mike said, suggestions that council has, any of the vision information that that expert has, you know, readily available to him or. So they could do some preliminary work, but to sink us deep into it and make the substantive changes, we'd, he'd have to have more information.
Sure, and I'm a little expert, but no stress with imagination, but I did take a look at the, our surrounding municipalities and Duval counties when I was sitting in the Board of Adjustment and saw disparities there that, to me, were painfully obvious.
Yeah.
And, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, no.
You're absolutely right. There are those that you could read and say, we know that that needs work. And, and you can begin to start, you know, drafting changes to it right away. Absolutely.
And, and I don't know that everything's hinged on that end of itself, that we can't start making some progress, even if it's a consultant or an expert taking a look at it and making some recommendations to you.
Do you have clear direction from the council?
No, but we'll make it work.
Okay, thank you. That was the last agenda item. Do you have anything else, Mr. Stappalos?
Just wanted to mention, I believe we have one current opening for an elected official on the pension board. And if there's any council members that are interested in volunteering to serve on that board, just let our office know.
It's not as daunting as it sounds. If you're interested, I encourage you to talk to Mr. Stappalos or Dustin Scott, who administers it. Chris is standing right? I want that. If I step down from the board.
Yours is the vacant chair.
Oh, okay, yours is standing on it. Unless we get two volunteers? Okay.
I have one quick item, not looking to open debate, but just want to see if there's a consensus to move this item forward. Some of you might have been approached as well by the property owner in town, Slayman. There's a shopping center that currently houses Kazoo Sushi Burrito, and it's right next to Graffiti Burger, who guys know we're talking about. They've been approached by a grocery store that is now beginning to operate liquor stores. I do not know the name, but it's a chain that we would be familiar with. However, that shopping center is kind of on the outside border of our central business district, and liquor and package stores are not allowable use in that district. So Planning Department has asked them to see if the city council wants to take it forward, and asked the staff to prepare LDC text amendments. So basically, if we wanted to move forward, I'm not advocating a position on this at all. If we wanted to move forward, it would be to allow liquor stores to be a conditional use in our central business district. So this would impact not only that shopping center, but the entire central business district. So that's something to, to consider. The other option would be to rewrite the boundaries of the central business district for title. I'm not recommending it, staff's not recommending that, and that's not what I'm asking about. So, just any, I guess, nod your head if you feel like we should move this forward, if you're interested in pursuing a change in the, in allowing a liquor store to be conditional use in the central business district? I don't see any nodding.
Ms. Demont? Oh, I'm sorry, is, she, she had that on earlier.
Oh, okay. That's just not enough information. It's not enough information. I need to know the zone, the exact property, I kind of know the whereabouts, what you're talking about, and then all of the areas that are going to be impacted. So I can't say that I'd be willing to move forward. I know just with basic, what we're trying, what we've been saying, we've been trying to get the city to do, I would not be willing to move forward with it.
Mr. Ambrosio?
Mayor, we just don't want to get too close to taking a vote of an entire.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So.
Tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
But can I, I, can I say, does anybody want to move forward with this?
Uh, what?
But am I allowed to ask?
Yeah, let's, let's not do any vote for this item at this particular juncture.
Okay.
In any way.
In any way?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
I got a question for clarity. You're saying it's a grocery store?
It's a grocery store chain, but it would be a liquor store.
It would be strictly a liquor store. I got you. So it's not a grocery store that's selling, that all those liquor?
Correct, correct.
I'm sorry. I was advised by the planning director to bring this up at a briefing.
No, that's absolutely fine. I'm glad you brought it up, but I just don't want to, as it's not an item that was actually identified in our public group notice for our briefing, and I also, yes, ma'am, I don't want to get too close to any voting on an item that wasn't noticed in at a briefing.
Ten-four.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Golding?
I just wanted to take a few minutes to share some information with the council that I think would be good information for everyone to have. I thought I was going to have to bring this to you as a problem, but I think it's been resolved, but I was contacted by a citizen. And Ms. Hoffman, you're the only one who's still on the council, who was on the council in 2017. There are some properties in, on Polynnes Drive that were plotted on the landfill, and as part of that plot, we had a, an environmental attorney recommend that some plot restrictions... that some plot restrictions be added to the plot, restricting wells because of the proximity to the landfill. And we recently had this, and so the wells are only permitted by Jacksonville, not by us. And Jacksonville permitted a well on one of those properties. So I have spent quite a bit of time talking to Jacksonville about this and trying to get it resolved. And I think, I think it's been resolved, because their well permitting department doesn't look at plots to see if there's any restrictions on plots. But now they have put something in their risk model, which is what they do look at, and they will now be flagged if another property owner comes to try to get a well permitted. Now, at this point, there's a well there that's not supposed to be, and that's, that's another, whole nother issue. But I just wanted to let you guys know, because I was thinking we were gonna have to, as a council, try to get some movement from Jacksonville, because it wasn't getting resolved. But then today, I, I got information from the Environmental Quality Division that said that they were able to put this information into a GIS layer for the risk model. So I think, I think we're okay. But anyway, that was passed, like I said, in 2017, and was a big concern, because I went back and listened to the city council meeting, and it was a big concern for several council members, that, that these restrictions, you know, be adhered to. And so, anyway, just wanted to let everybody know, so if anything does come up, or you hear anything about it, just hopefully, we hope this has been resolved.
Think that's all the business for today? All right. We'll see you at our regular council meeting next Monday, the 21st. All right. Thank you, everyone.